Here. We'll have opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, in the face of many choices that life increasingly requires, help us to make the right decisions and to walk in the right direction. We know your will is for the good of all members of our community. We also pray for the police and fire department and city workers for their safety and the work they do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have approval of the agenda?
It's all moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tweedy and seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve the agenda as written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. And we'll get down to recognition of visitors. We have Justin.
Jagels.
Jagels. Would you come up, state your name and address, please?
My name is Justin Jagels. I live at eleven hundred West Colorado. My concern was recently brought to light by a announcement of a haunted house in my neighborhood. Google Maps puts it as three hundred and twenty-one feet from my house, roughly one block. My concern is the effect of something like this that occurs after ten P M. or when quiet hours are typically understood and the effect on the kind of day-to-day operations of family and resident. I have small children and while I can make a noise complaint, if they're woken up, there's no going back at that point as far as for that night. There's also the concern of increased traffic and parking in yards and other violations of that nature. There's ways to address this and it is a rather short time period that these take place, but that doesn't change the effect on the residents while it's a, you know, just because it's only a few days doesn't mean it affects residents any less in their use of their own property. There's regulations for things that only affect others' property value. They have no real bearing such as cars left in yards and tall grass. But as far as something like this where, which is essentially a commercial enterprise in a residential zone, there is no benefit to the city. This is the first year this has taken place in my neighborhood, but with all things, with success comes repetition. I have concern for the future and as it goes on, there are going to be more attendees. At current count, there was nine thousand views of the advertisement video. I'm just concerned of the effect it will have on my family and the effect it could have on other families in other areas of town if this were to become more of a thing. Something that could be a permit with an application fee that allows the city to contact nearby residents to make sure that it's acceptable and not going to cause hindrance to their way of life or something similar.
Well, just to address his concern, I think he's spot on, you know, with having a major concern, but as far as regulation goes zoning, we have no zoning regulation against haunted houses. We don't regulate what takes place inside a home.
Can we make it a permit thing?
We potentially could, but then you're going to have to look at what districts it's allowed in, so on and so forth.
Okay.
And I do not, are they charging admission? I can't remember. They are charging admission.
They're making money off of it.
Yeah, and the admission would be taxable in that sense, and so they would have to file the state sales tax.
Okay. So is this at a house or is it?
It's an regular house.
What's the address?
Twelve oh one Colorado.
So they're not that, they're blocking.
It's about three hundred feet.
Yeah.
Justin called me last night. I asked him to come tonight to talk to the commission because, you know, in the past, I think it's been, it's been years and years ago, J.C.'s did on the house, but it was uptown, one of these buildings, I think it's gone now. It wasn't even residential and I told him last night that this, you know, this is the first one I've heard of in residential and I didn't know what to do, you know.
We actually had one in a residential area.
South end of town.
Yeah, south end of town.
Spooksville, back, yeah, many years ago.
Was that in a very?
Yeah, it was on Southeast Street.
Southeast.
Nine, ten hundred block.
Okay.
Well, the concern I have is, you know, is the streets up there are really narrow where he's, where he lives.
It's a dirt road as well.
And I guess, you know, if they carry on after ten o'clock, I mean, I told him that, you know, he could call the police and maybe the police.
Actually, a noise ordinance takes place regardless of time, correct? I mean, there's no time limitations on noise. I mean, at any point, if it's too noisy, they could file a complaint.
What are the hours, what are the hours of operation? I haven't seen that post.
It starts at ten P M.
At night?
Mm-hmm.
It starts at ten?
It's a sort of.
What about fire code? We may have some, we may have some fire code issues which then we can address it.
Thank you for letting me address this, Mayor, City Commission. I based, I wasn't aware of this haunted house and heard rumors of one going, we've got particular fire code issues. You know, you're having to deal with exits also dependent upon, especially opening up to the public for profit, but your exits have to be adequately marked. What's the draw on the electrical system? Are they going to have open flames? So there's a lot of areas that we really need to look into as far as the five, life safety aspect. So I'd be willing to try to get a hold of the individual that's going to put this on and at least do an inspection.
Well, that's probably the first step we need to do and then charge them taxes?
They have to pay sales tax.
Sales tax.
Yeah, that's one of them.
I doubt like.
Is this an organization that's collecting money for purpose?
I have no idea.
Um, the, um, from what I understand, it's a, uh, the person that's doing it is a DJ out of Wichita. He was an Ark City resident. He's actually a friend of my wife's cousin. But.
Is there a Facebook page for this haunted house?
I don't know if there's a Facebook page. I can't remember the name of the, there's a production company that he has, I, from what I understand. I think it's K T X.
And that's, that, that, that house is, nobody's living in it. It's just a vacant house?
As far as I know, there's, there's cars in the driveway and have been, so I think there are people living there.
Okay.
Um, I, the, the advertisement wasn't real detailed, so, you know, as far as the details go, I'm, I'm not real clear on that.
Eight to eleven is the time.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, and it.
What, what page did you find it?
It's, I, I just Googled Ark City haunted on, on Facebook. It's under Tribe, Tribe B threads and it's October twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth. Entry fee's five dollars.
Wow.
Didn't find that.
That restricts a lot of people right there, five dollars.
Five dollars a person?
Yeah. And then, and then not only that, but there's another one on, on South Second, sixteen twenty-four South Second that's going to operate called The Butcher Shop.
What was that address?
The second one?
Yeah.
Sixteen twenty-four South Second.
The first one was what, twelve oh one?
Twelve oh one, West Colorado.
There it is. Tribe Threads. Is the video appropriate for TV or not, or for the masses or not really?
There wasn't any as typical Halloween scary clowns pretty much. So, um, so I.
House of Vapes is part of it?
In Absolute Vapor Lounge?
Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah.
This, this is the first, I'd heard of it, I think, the mayor too.
Yeah, I hadn't heard of it. Definitely have to have all the safety features in place and how many people can be in it at one time and all that stuff before they can even do anything.
Okay.
Isn't that right?
Correct.
Bobby, the one at twenty, South Second's already had one, eleventh and twelfth, they had a, had an activity.
When I say this was news to me, so, yeah, these are, if you've ever been in a haunted house, I know in Wichita that they're regulated pretty.
Yes.
Strenuous because they're usually dark and trip hazards.
Well, the.
And a lot of electrical draw and then having, there's just a lot of things that can go wrong.
When the J.C.'s did theirs, they were limited to people that could be in there at one time.
That's what I was offered.
All kinds, yeah, all kinds of regulations that they had.
Chief Ward, as far as what would be some of your concerns in regards to traffic and the individuals, because if you're under eighteen, you've got the curfew violation, correct?
Well, not if they're company by.
By their guardian, correct? If they're over eighteen, but if they're under eighteen, then that's potentially.
If they're under eighteen, it's ten o'clock?
Obviously.
No, it's midnight.
Midnight.
Obviously, the biggest problem would be if there's, if there's a noise and it's disturbing the public, then we want to know, we want to be notified.
Parking.
So he could call, so Justin could call you or somebody on that block could call you and then you could go down and deal with the noise.
Well, all I know is if someone's screaming in my neighborhood, I think I'd be really concerned.
Yeah.
That'd be enough to be a noise complaint.
I'd rather get a handle on this before it comes to the noise complaint thing, so maybe, you know, they may not even be able to do it if, if they don't have enough emergency exits and.
As far as the regulations on my end, I don't know of anything that I could do other than respond to an issue at the time, a complaint and review it.
Then it'll be fire code.
It'd be under the fire chief's.
Justin, have they been playing loud music already?
Um, no, they're, it's a pretty quiet neighborhood. There really isn't any, it's kind of wild out here.
Okay.
So.
I didn't know if they'd had any in the past.
Um, no, not that I know of. I've had other neighbors that have had things going on, but it's been pretty quiet in that respect, so it's more the haunted house screaming, stuff like that, you know, things that carry.
Okay.
Well, I don't know if we really helped you that much tonight. I thank you for coming, but, you know, like I said, if the noise gets out of hand, I think.
Yeah, and I figured it wasn't necessarily a thing of tonight or this year, but more of something considered for the future.
Yeah.
Um, just safety and then, you know, the general well-being of the property owners. I mean, property taxes and buying a house.
I think the biggest thing is safety right now.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and the rest of it will come later, so, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Really appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to awards and proclamations. Proclaim November twenty sixteen as American Music Month in Arkansas City. Proclamation, whereas music, the universal language of peace, is one of the great arts and an outstanding feature of our culture, and whereas the National Federation of Music Clubs, having as a foremost objective the promotion of American music, will stage its annual Parade of American Music through the month of November, and whereas the Kansas Federation of Music Clubs and the Arkansas City Music and Dramatics Club join in encouraging and stimulating interest in American music and the enjoyment and appreciation it brings, and whereas the Parade of American Music is designed to give our own worthy United States composers recognition, encouragement, and support, and to impress upon the public that it has creative, as well as performing musical artists and a musical culture equal to that of other countries. Now therefore, I, Duane L. Eastman, Mayor of the City of Arkansas City, do hereby proclaim the month of November twenty sixteen as American Music Month in Arkansas City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to join in this observation. Moving on to consent agenda. Approve the October fourth, twenty sixteen, regular meeting minutes as written. Item two, a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City, approve addendum number two to the agreement with rural, rural Fire District Number Five to extend the term of that contract, provide fire services, and ratify Mayor Duane Eastman's appointment of James Frye to the Equal Opportunity and Accessibility Advisory Board.
I have a question on number two. How long is that contract? Is it for five years or four?
Four year.
Four year.
Four year agreement.
Uh, when I was going through that, that, the, what you gave us, do they pay the same amount every year?
No, it, it varies. It's depending, it's a, it's a certain mill levy.
Okay.
That comes directly, so it does fluctuate with values.
Very, okay.
Seven mils, isn't it, or?
Um, it's on.
Well, it was on.
I, I read it.
The original agreement, I believe it's. Let me go back and look.
I saw the mill levy, but I didn't know if there's, pardon?
It says it was seven in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, seven and a half starting in two thousand eleven.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's going, we're issuing it at seven and a half then?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. I s, I read that and saw the amount they paid and I didn't know what else they paid. Okay, any other questions?
Well, I'll make a motion, we can, or we approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Commissioner Warren and seconded by Commissioner Tweedy to approve the consent agenda as printed. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Old business.
Consider submitting of the ordinance modifying municipal code concerning general provisions for city organizations, including boards, commissions, committees, councils, and task
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Ordinance in front of you is the same that we discussed two meetings back. Have made some modifications based on input from the commission. The main thing that I thought was at issue was the absenteeism concerns, especially pertaining to the Building Trades Board, and so we kind of went back to the drawing board a little bit and looked at that and sort of came to the realization that the language in the Building Trades Board ordinance is quite detailed, so it would probably, we thought, be better to just have one set of rules for all boards and then leave room for discretion on the part of the board chair. And I know Commissioner Yurkovich had some concerns about staff having an undue amount of influence on, on what is considered an absence, so what we've done, under the general provisions, section two fifty-four, is added absenteeism language that mostly was borrowed from the Building Trades Board with some modifications and established that for all boards. So it defines what an absence is. The first, section A, is pretty much, that's always been there, but the determination of absence, section B, is, is what's new. We allow for the emergencies, medical conditions, and military leave. That was the language borrowed from the Building Trades Board and those seem to be pretty non-controversial. And then I allowed for, you know, I mean, special exception judgment of the board chair is basically what it all boils down to. The board chair is best poised to know what a person's situation is and I would hope that our board chairs would keep on top of those and, and, you know, if it gets to be where something's happening persistently, it's one of those, you pull someone aside and you talk to them and ask, can they really do this anymore situation. It shouldn't be a thing where staff has to intervene. Without naming names, I know we had a situation with someone who had an ill spouse for some period of time and was not able to attend meetings, but that person is a very productive board member, so you have to make some allowances there. And then there's kind of the in-between gray areas. You know, if someone has an appointment scheduled or something comes up at work or for whatever reason, they just can't be at a meeting, but they call ahead and notify and say, hey, I'm not going to be there. To me, that should be excused, but we left it to where that's at the discretion of the chair, but we kind of suggested that those are also excusable. But what, well, I talked to a lot of board secretaries in the last month and we all agreed, if you don't call, you're not going to get an excused absence. I mean, it's that simple. You're not making the effort and the people who don't call are the people who are gone for three meetings in a row and need to be removed and replaced. And this is the simple truth of it, so that's basically what we've laid out there. The process is that the board chair determines whether or not it's excused or unexcused. Now, they should follow what's here in code, obviously, as the guidelines, but like I said, there is some leeway. The secretary records it, so the secretary is involved to the extent of asking the question, is this excused or unexcused? I mean, because otherwise a board chair is probably just going to occasionally let things slip through. And so to kind of help with that accountability, I'm just going to create some forms, just simple half-page sheets, check a box, write in the date, sign it, and give it to me or Leslie. That way, we just have something to fall back on in case there's ever any confusion and, and then for them, they know when they're recording the rule, just pull it out, fill it out, and give it to the chair. So I think it'll be pretty simple. Richard said it'll work for him fine with the Building Trades Board. That allows him to bring up the issue, but he's not the one making the decision about it.
So if somebody has three, I mean, misses three times and whoever the chairman of the board is, will he have to take it back to his members to, to vote on whether they excuse him or not or, or the person or, or does, does the chairman make the decision only?
I mean, at that point, code kicks in and basically says, you, the commission, can remove that individual. When those issues have come up, I've tried to flag them for your awareness and, you know, we've had one or two that have basically admitted, yeah, I need to step off, and then the others have recommitted to what they're doing. And in some cases, like I said, like the last time we discussed this, we've gone back and looked and found they had an absence that should have been excused. I just mark unexcused ninety-five percent of the time because I'm never given any information unless I overhear at a meeting I'm at that so-and-so called in and then I think, okay, well, that's, that's excused. We don't have any formal process. I think having the forms will solve that and we probably won't have anywhere near as many people racking up those kind of absences for that reason, but even, even without it, we just, we've only had four since I've been on board that have even come close. So I think, I think it just, when, when you hit two, it's already a situation where you should be talking to them and understanding what their situation is. I've had that conversation with one of the staff members for a board because I know it's a very good productive member. She just can't always be there because of work and it's just one of those, hey, just make sure you try to be there at least once every three meetings. Otherwise, you're out of the loop on everything and you're not being productive. So I think it just needs to be a conversational thing and that's why I didn't really put any language in there beyond what we already had.
Do you think?
Well, do you, do you think that with this new code section and the, the printout of it, that it'll help those that are lax in their attendance?
I think so because it, it's more lenient than what we had. What we had was just, you're absolutely or not. Could be excused, could be unexcused. There were no criteria. There was no uniformity to it and I think that caused people to just not bother to call. Hopefully now, and I, if, if this is approved, I will go to all the boards and go over this with them so they understand effective twenty seventeen, this is how we're going to do it, and I think they'll understand, or the vast majority will understand, a courtesy call is all we're asking for, if, if you can. I mean, sometimes emergencies happen and you're not in a position to do that. Those are clearly excused though, after the fact. It will definitely help staff as far as when we're tracking who's on the boards and, you know, those, those things that we do, and I think it'll, it'll help the board chairs too, but it also puts responsibility on the board chairs that they don't.
That's what I was kind of wondering about.
This is part of what we're trying to do, is strengthen them a little bit to take charge of their boards so staff don't have to do it. It's not a hard task, but it does require some accountability and, you know, as boards are making the decision of who's going to lead us, I hope that they'll take these things.
Have you had any members on any of these boards disagree with what we're trying to do right here?
No.
Okay.
No, everyone I've talked to is in favor of it and Nick will attest, our last clarification board meeting, had an open discussion about the, they said, we need a chair. I mean, they saw it, even I even raised some of this with them because I do too much running of the meetings or Nick does too much. They've been operative now for a year and a quarter and it's, I think they're ready to stand on their own legs and kind of, I hope you saw that last night.
Yeah.
But they're going to have to make a decision, who is that going to be? And so, like I said, I will go over this with them. Like I said, that was the main change. In the Building Trades Board section, we just struck all the attendance language to, it's all been moved here. The only other points of discussion that I had in my notes and didn't really have a clear determination were the issues of residency and the number of boards you can be on. I've left that language unchanged, but certainly a commission direction. We can make alterations. I know Commissioner Tweedy had some, I don't know, concerns is the right word, but you raised the issue about whether those were good things to do. I will say, the more I've looked into residency issue, it's probably, it's probably closer to fifty-fifty than I had realized and on some boards, it just, does not make sense. A good example is the Outstanding Student Committee. We've got some people on that that live outside the city limits and that shouldn't even be an issue because the school district goes outside the city limits, as does the college, so how do we exempt that board when it doesn't even exist in, in our municipal code? I don't know. So I would, I would not have an objection to removing that at this time and maybe we just say in each board's bylaws, if it requires you to be a resident, and that would be the better way to approach it. So we would just need a motion to approve the ordinance with striking through that clause if that's the way you wanted to go.
Did you have a question, Commissioner?
I, I think if I remember right, my only question was people serving on more than one board and when we're trying to get as many citizens involved, that, that was my concern.
Yeah.
We might be limiting the number.
We have seventy-nine seats available. We've filled all but seven or eight of them. We're looking at potentially creating two more committees and we only have three people currently serving on more than one board, one of whom is a quasi-representative of one board to the other.
Right.
I personally don't think it's going to be an issue or reduce opportunities and ultimately, I mean, it's going to be the commission's decision when appointing people, whether to put them, but I think that there are enough boards that tend to overlap a little bit that it's good to have the co-membership to improve the communication and I would hate to see it go away. It certainly makes it even harder for us to find people if, if we're telling them, you can't be involved except in one very narrow focus area. And we've had a, we've had a strong history of board members who've been on multiple boards. Now, I don't, we've had people who've been on three, four, or five boards and I don't want to see that and I think two is a good compromise for that.
I would hope that, and I think we've tried to keep several boards that are not city specific, that are in the city, try to get members outside the city on a board, like hospital and, and.
Well, that's a community, that's a.
Community.
Yeah.
And.
The library should be the same.
Library.
Even though taxing wise it isn't.
Yeah, I mean, those that really doesn't.
I, I think, as we've talked through, I think, let's just strike it and we'll put it in where appropriate. And it already is in the planning commission where that's the biggest issue. If there are any other boards that I go down the list and see that maybe we should look at that, we'll just bring it up as we've been doing. Are there any other questions or concerns?
As I read through this, I, I didn't see anything pertaining to special meetings. If you missed that, is that considered a, missing a regular meeting?
I'm glad you brought that up.
Unless I missed it somewhere, I, I read through most, just about everything here.
The absenteeism provision just applies to regular.
Regular, just regular meetings?
Yeah, and I think you have to make that allowance because special meetings are sometimes called.
When somebody, yeah.
And, you know, lately, I mean, Chris Tackett, great example, we just put him on the Publicity Commission, he couldn't be here.
Right.
On Friday, he's out of town for vacation. Vacation is scheduled well in advance of us coming up with that meeting.
Right.
Should that count against him? No, I don't think so.
No, that's unfair, so.
It, it's unfortunate when you, when that board meets so infrequently, but it did happen, so I, it's not his fault. So, yeah, regular meetings, I think, is a good way to go with that. And most of the boards meet every month. It was establishing that they need to meet every month unless they just have no reason to.
Let me ask you this question. Like on the hospital board, you know, they're all, you know, in town or outside, but, you know, we also serve Winfield. Could, could be a couple of members from Winfield be on that board or not? I mean.
That's the prerogative of the commission. I mean, we did have one applicant the last round that was from Winfield and I recall discussing it with the mayor.
Mm-hmm.
I remember you or Chad, one of them, Chad.
You discuss it with me?
We all talked about it.
I think I'd rather have the.
We sort of interpreted service area not.
Commissioners and stuff.
At that point.
Look at it.
That's not to say.
See what we get into legally. If there's any legal bounds.
Is there any, Tamara, is there any legal bounds like on the hospital board?
Provisions regarding residency are solely within your discretion. You can decide whether they have to be resident. Provisions regarding residency are solely within your discretion. Uh, you can decide whether they have to be residents, whether it's a service area or whether there's no residency.
Well, I mean, we serve people from Winfield too, so, I mean, it's a,
It could open up the dialogue for sure, of trying to bring the two communities together.
Yeah.
We might.
I mean, it really could.
Consider that the next time, yeah.
At least, at least you would have, potentially have some individuals that live in Winfield or from the Winfield area that would at least know how our operations are going, and so they could potentially dispel rumors.
Would, would we have to change the ordinance then?
And have a better idea. No.
No?
No.
No, it just says service area. It's just however you interpret that. I would say, we've talked about looking at that ordinance next year, depending on how things go, so it's,
Well, I, you know, my, I'm just talking out loud. My personal feelings, I think that's a great idea. You know, it might be a start of getting the two communities working together. And, and we have people from Winfield, come to our hospital.
Yeah, I mean, the issue is we don't have any vacancies currently, but you never know. We do have a member scheduled to term expire in April. Uh, it's her first term, so she could be reappointed. It'd be your decision whether or not to do that. I can certainly contact Mr. Koller and see if his application is still valid. I, I know he's related to people who are on the Land, Land Rush Antique Mall, so he has connections to Arc City even if he doesn't live here.
I'd like, I'd like to give him more. I think, because we're looking at a strategic plan in the future for the hospital, I think we need to, my personal thoughts, feelings is have nine individuals on that board, three from the county, three from Arc City, and three from Winfield. And, and let's have it be a true strategic plan for the health of, uh, the county and not just Arc City or just Winfield. And let's have that discussion and see how we can help one another. Even if you get three people with agendas from Winfield, three people with agendas from Arc City, you know, if we can get them all together in a room and just start hashing out and dealing with these rumors and nonsense that we hear, maybe we can at least start taking baby steps in the right direction.
I'd, I'd kinda like to have a dialogue with the hospital board before we really do anything specific about that, but, um, like Nick says, maybe a,
Go slowly.
Go slowly and see what happens.
It's gonna take time.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think, you know, after the report we got from Quorum, I think it's definite that we gotta do something. That's gonna have to be a step we take
Mm-hmm.
to, uh, well, I don't know what to call it, but something we have to do to maybe in, increase our base or whatever you wanna call it for the hospital.
I, I would agree with you, fourth, that based on the discussion we had at the study session in May, there are other things in the composition of the board of trustees and the hospital administration that probably need to take a look at.
The one thing that I do know scares William Newton, and they may not ever even come out and say this in public, but I'm gonna say it, is the debt. The debt load of the hospital. They think it's twice as much as what it actually is, which is one of the things I've heard.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but also, I think if they knew that the debt portion was, was taken care of, I think that the discussions would be a lot more open. You know, we're not asking them to assume the debt of the hospital, and I think that's something that people need to be aware of. We're not asking them to do that.
Right.
We're just asking them to partner to make both hospitals stronger and better to beauty. They have debt that we don't want. You know, we have debt that, that you know that they don't want. But if we can, as a city, can take care of our portion of the hospital debt, and they take care of their portion, then let's have that discussion. Take the debt out of it, you know?
Yeah.
And let's have a good, honest discussion of how we can make one another better.
It's definitely something we have to do now.
Yeah, but I think they need to hear that, that let's take the debt out of discussion and let's work on everything else.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
So, is that a trustees board? Is that commissions?
I think it's, I think it's the commission's direction to the hospital board, is what I think it is.
Okay.
Because technically, you are, you appoint the hospital board members. You can admonish the board at any time.
So, do we need that, I mean, do we need to add a motion written up?
No, I don't think so. I think just by having dialogue and just letting them know that that's kind of what you wanna see, I think. I, I think the hospital board that we, we have is responsive enough. I think that they would be, I think they probably feel the same way. You know, may not all of them, but I think the majority of them will feel the same way.
All right. Okay. Well, to bypass that and get back to the, uh, our item here, I move that we ratif- ratify ordinance modifying municipal code part two, chapters two, fourteen, and thirty-eight concerning general provisions for city organizations, including boards, commissions, committees, councils, and task forces.
I second.
Just to clarify, is that with striking the residency requirement?
Yeah. Right.
Everything you detailed to us is covered in this after we strike that residency thing?
Yes. We'll just take out E and shift up F and G.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. What, what you gave to us, from me, okay? Any other discussion from commissioners? It's been moved by myself and seconded by, seconded by Commissioner Welch that we approve ordinance modifying municipal code part two, chapters two, fourteen, and thirty-eight. Roll call.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Mary Sue?
Yes. Okay, I think we're ready for new business.
So, uh, getting back to the hospital thing, so what we said tonight about trying to get the two hospitals together and working and forget about the debt on each side, so are you gonna take that to the hospital, or how's that gonna be done?
I'll, I'll take that to hospital board meeting, I think, next week.
Thursday.
No, it's tomorrow. I'll bring it up to him tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay.
Or Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
Yeah.
Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll be there giving you support. Okay. All right. We're good, I think, aren't we? Oh, you're on the next one? Okay. New business.
Consider resolution to approve the recommendation of the Beautification and Tree Advisory Board to initiate an adoption contract for one year with the Arc City Convention and Visitors Bureau and Friends of the Burford for the city-owned parking lot at A Street and Central Avenue.
Um, we have Bob Foster here with us from the Beautification Board. I was expecting somebody from the CDB or the Burford, but we can speak for them because we have their application and have had multiple meetings on this. Um,
Blank. Second one.
Yeah. So, the parking lot in question is the one behind the Burford and the CDB, which are over to the left, and then south there is the, uh, library. And they wanna include that median that divides the library's back parking lot and the rest of it. So, the proposal is basically, uh, Virginia Lamb, who's doing the Flowers in the Breezeway, wants to plant crepe myrtles and other ornamental grasses and shrubbery in those planting areas, and we're gonna do some tree trimming, I think. Uh, they've asked the city to spray for weeds in the alley, which is fine. Um, there was a request to put some crushed rock in some of those planting beds, which we can potentially do as, as it is feasible. And, uh, of course, we had the giant cleanup effort before the Burford was opened where they had the volunteers go in and get all that stuff out of there. And we can run the streets of Burford. We can do those kind of efforts periodically to help keep it clean. So, and we already have a cooperative relationship with the Burford and the CDB on this project. This just formalizes it. Um, the Beautification Board met with them, um, September twelfth, and they went around the parking lot and pointed out all the things they wanted to do. And they sort of informally approved it at that time, and then at their regular meeting last month, they did vote four to zero to recommend what would be our very first adoption since we passed the policy. Of course, it's not a park. Uh, in fact, all the interest thus far for people to adopt property has been in parking lots. So, what we've done is return to this a public land adoption. That way, it covers any potential city property that people wanna take responsibility for making look a little nicer. Um, certainly, it's still open to parks. We just are waiting on proposals. Uh, but staff has no problem with this. Uh, the board is fully in favor of it. They wanted to do it for a term of one year and kind of just feel this process out, so they didn't ask them for a budget or any kind of cost, um, promise, just to, you know, plant and go and see how it develops. Uh, so this would be for a term of one year. Um, that's really all I have. You have any questions?
I think it's a great idea. I mean, it's, it cleans up property up and, uh, that's right on Main Street, behind, you know, Main Street, and, uh, I think it's a great idea.
Great partnership.
I think this goes to what, what we talked about yesterday, cooperation at the public and just trying to, um, take those little steps to make Arc City a more attractive place.
Is there a plan to eliminate the trees along the alley?
No. The trees are, the Bradford pear trees are all along that alleyway. They're gonna maintain them. We may have to go in there and trim them up.
Right.
Um, we did trim a couple of trees up a little bit, uh, but outside of that, we're, they're gonna maintain them and keep them there.
Well, I'll make a motion. We consider a resolution to approve the recommendation of the Beautification and Tree Advisory Board to initiate adoption contract for one year with the City of Arcana City Convention and Visitors Bureau and, uh, Friends of the Burford for the city-owned parking lot at A Street and Central.
We do have an interest in the Presbyterian, um, church, the, um, parking lot directly across from Presbyterian Church.
Yes.
And we're still working on details, is that correct?
Funding was kind of the holdup there, I think.
Okay.
Second to motion.
Okay.
We may be bringing that before the commission here before too long, too.
And then there's the lion statue too.
Yeah, and then the other one's a, uh, re, uh, recasting or re, I don't know, redesign of the lion statue in Paris Park.
Yeah, okay. All right. It's been moved by Commissioner Warren and seconded by Commissioner Tweedy to approve resolution to recommend the Beautification and Tree Advisory Board and to adopt a city-owned parking lot at A Street and Central Avenue. Any other discussion? Vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. I vote yes.
Thank you. Um, on that statue, I just wanna mention, the board did vote to approve, uh, that work as well. Um, there's a cost of about four hundred dollars with that, that the Lions Club is gonna pick up. Um, it will require the removal of the statue to take it to a Carver Studio in Telequale, Oklahoma, so that he can work on it there. So, I don't know if that's something that the commission would need to approve. Just to be aware that the statue may disappear for a while.
We'll sit in front of notices.
I can have it in form, but Rob Carroll's helping with that effort.
Yeah, Rob Carroll's kind of directing, leading that effort.
Okay. Yeah, whatever they need from us.
I'm sure he knows lots of people that do that kind of stuff.
Yes, he does.
Thank you.
Item number two.
Um, two A, consider first reading of ordinance says loving various special assessments for code enforcement activities for unpaid charges, including weed mowing and property maintenance violations.
Okay, when I went through this, is this, these, uh, assessments for what we've already done?
This year.
This year?
Fifteen and sixteen.
Fifteen and sixteen.
Okay. Uh, what is, I noticed there's, uh, most of them are under a thousand dollars, but there's one here that's thirteen fifty. Is that the size, or is that multiple times it's been done?
Yes, that's multiple times if we've been, happened to go back and correct.
What is our base, basic charge for a mowing?
Depending on the lot size and the amount of degree, it can vary. Uh, as you can see there, two to four hundred, but it can be a little larger depending on how much they have to fall off.
I believe minimum's a hundred dollars, though.
Okay.
I think the minimum is.
Yeah, that's, that's just the minimum.
All right.
Typically, we can have twenty, thirty dollars just in certified mailing to some of these individuals, so, um, and then we have mowing charges on top of that, so, to be honest, that some of these properties, we break even basically is all we're doing, so, and we lose money on some.
If we have to haul off junk off the property, I mean, that takes, takes a lot.
Tamara, all these people have been notified? I mean,
Uh, yes. By law, we're required to send them, uh, an invoice by certified mail, and then if they don't pay it within thirty days, then we can assess it to the taxes. We've given, I believe, all of these people significantly longer than thirty days, and,
And you've never had any response back?
No, no payment. If they were paying on it, we wouldn't assess it.
Richard, are any of these houses on our condemned watch list?
No, we tore them down.
Oh, torn down.
These have all been torn down.
All these houses have, these?
I believe. Haven't they? On the, on the,
We have five left from last year.
We ran out of money, right?
Five left from the original list.
Okay.
But this, this first list we're looking at, most of those houses are tore down?
Most of them are.
Okay.
You're talking, the list that you're talking about is on, um,
The second one?
That's the second portion of this.
Okay, but this first list is, is regular houses?
Th- these are mowing, mowing and junk.
Yes.
It's just mowing on these. These are just mowing. The next one's junk, correct?
The,
Property maintenance on the next one. Okay.
Okay. There's only what, four on those?
Yeah, there's thirteen thousand dollars total on, on the weed abatement. There is forty-three, forty-seven, and twenty cents on the, um, real property, property maintenance violations, and then dangerous unfit structure demolition was twenty-eight, seven, ninety-four, twenty-four.
What's, what's our chances of seeing any, any money back from this once we put it on the tax rolls?
The, um, dangerous structures, usually our recovery is, is very low because it will eventually go to foreclosure and then somebody buys it for pennies on the dollar. Um, the rest of them, we have a better recovery, um, because generally, people are going to pay a three hundred dollar special assessment whether they can get their house foreclosed on.
Okay.
Uh, plus, these do have houses on them, so the value is significantly different.
Yeah, that was, that was my question on the weeds and debris mow and stuff, yeah.
Mine, too, so.
Since they've all been notified and they've had plenty of time to respond, and they haven't responded, I mean, there's no sense, I mean, delaying this thing. I mean, since it's the first reading, I mean,
That's right.
Is that your motion, Jay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I was waiting for it, too. Okay.
This will, please, ma'am, this will require two votes, one for the weed and one for the property maintenance.
Okay, is, is, uh,
Well, I'll make a motion that consider the first reading of the order as levying various special assessments for the code enforcement activities for unpaid charges, including weed mowing and property maintenance violations. That's the first one, right?
Which is weed mowing.
Yeah.
Man, I'll second that. Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Warren and seconded by Commissioner Tweedy to approve the ordinance that levying various special assessments for code enforcement activities for unpaid charges, including weed mowing and property maintenance violations.
Uh, actually, we need to separate those out.
It's just weed mowing.
Just weed mowing?
There's, there's one ordinance for weed mowing and one ordinance for property maintenance.
Okay, I, I made this up here.
Yeah, there's three total ordinances.
Three total ordinances here, okay. All right.
There's two ordinances and one certificate.
Remove property maintenance violations for the last word. Last word. Okay. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Mary Sue?
Yes.
Then I'll make a motion on property maintenance violations for the second one.
Okay. You got that?
I do.
It's been moved by Commissioner Warren and seconded by Commissioner Tweedy to levy various special assessments for property maintenance violations. Roll call.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Mary Sue?
Yes. Okay.
Uh, the question, and this is kind of a silly question, but why are they separated? I mean, like that?
Uh, because they're for two different, um, violations, and so they do fall under two different sections of code.
Okay.
So, it just makes it clear, this is why this is assessed versus the reason the other one is assessed.
All right. Okay, are we ready for the third one?
Tubby, yes. Consider for approval a certificate of special assessment for dangerous structure demolitions.
Okay, we kind of talked about that. That's, uh, the twenty-eight thousand.
Correct.
Okay. Well, since we kind of talked with that, I so move that, uh, we make special assessment for dangerous structure demolitions. Second.
Uh, on discussion, like the Bank of America, uh, for, um, eighty-five hundred, is anything we, we can get out of them or not, Tamara?
Uh, no, we can probably, um, get the money from them. They, if they're the one that's assessed, most likely, this was a foreclosure action, and then they took title in the foreclosure action because they were the legal owner when we demolished it. They are legally responsible for it.
But if they don't pay that, it, it goes to tax sale eventually, right?
Yes, however, if it does go to tax sale, whatever they still owe us, we can then recover outside of the tax sale.
Okay.
Um, the problem with a lot of these is sometimes the people have left and we don't know where they went, or the owner has passed away. So, tax sale is our only avenue of recovery. Um, but if it's a business that we know is, or that we hope is, um, flush with cash, like Bank of America, then, then that is a company that we can obtain payment otherwise.
Do you think that the taxes are more than what, more, more value than, than what we?
No, the taxes are probably significantly less.
Okay, so there, there could be something. Okay, so there, there could be something out of that too, okay.
So is this seven oh three North Third, is that northwest corner of Birch and Third Street? Is that the one?
Yes, it's a two-story.
Two-story?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Wouldn't we tear that down?
That was a fire, wasn't it?
No.
That one wasn't?
That's where we first started.
On the corner, it was a yellow.
Yellow, yeah.
Yeah.
A year?
Has it been that long?
It's been six, eight months for sure.
Has it?
Oh, yeah, it's been a long time.
Been a while, okay. Alright.
I've driven by it three or four times, I've never noticed.
Okay, since there's a motion on the floor. To, uh, s- s- approve a certificate of special assessment for dangerous structure demolitions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. City manager updates.
Uh, had a meeting today, uh, in regards to Edsanoa, um, at Wichita State University, myself and Commissioner Warren attended. Uh, just brainstorming that next step, so what needs to be done, who, who's gonna be responsible for what. A lot of work to be done still, so it's. We're ways out, but, um, good conversation, um. That's gonna be a work in progress for a long time.
Years, a long time.
Yeah, years, decades potentially. It's, it's not gonna be a fast process by any means.
Did they find anything new out there this last summer?
Uh, the area is, keeps getting bigger.
Does it?
Seems like everything, every time they turn around, it keeps expanding and growing.
Well, that's why it's kind of down.
So they, they only basically do anything during the summer months, right?
Right.
They don't, they don't do any winter, winter stuff?
Right. And, um, other updates, uh, the, uh, radio lane project is, um, on, it is.
They finished milling the day, they'll start laying asphalt in the morning, one o' the morning.
For everyone out there in regards to the Summit Street project, our goal is to fill in the voids on Summit Street or cover them up temporarily during Arcalala. Have all the barricades at least pushed back to the curb from Wednesday through the weekend and then move them back in on Monday. So as to not impede traffic or to be too much concerned. Am I gonna say it's gonna be perfect? No, it's not going to be. There's, and, uh, but we're trying our best to make sure that it's, it's at least, um, the holes are covered up and, um, they're passable, so.
Uh, I've had a lot of people ask me about, uh, why do we wait till now and I've been telling them that it's the soonest we could get her done and instead of waiting too long.
You're at the whim of the contractor too when it comes to a lot of these things, you know, um.
Exactly. Exactly, so. We'd like to have it done in summer, but that wasn't possible, so.
Correct, you know, you have to look at their schedule, you have to look at how big of our project it is and, and typically you get a better price if you're willing to negotiate timeline and timeframe.
Exactly, so.
So, w- we could've paid a lot more money probably to get it done in a very restrictive amount of time, but rather than do that, you know, we, we gave more flexibility to the contractor.
Where our dollar restrictions fall.
Absolutely.
I think they ought to be glad that we're trying to save money as, and get stuff done too.
And we're working around the school district, we're working with the Arc, Arcalala Committee, so we're working with entities, um, and we're doing our best to try to get updates out there. In regards to what's being impacted when, so.
Waterline replacement going to schedule? I mean, are, are they?
The waterline placement is, is, is going, uh, their hope was actually to have it up and running by now, I believe. But they had a little bit of delay, um, but it should be, I think, connected here before too long. Uh, and, and they'll start putting the pits back in and closing it all up, so. Um, right now, though, they're starting to work on the curb and gutter along those sections and then they'll start working on actual intersections through there, tearing them out and replacing with concrete and. And so, it's a, it's a big project.
Yeah.
But it'll be nice when it's done.
Okay.
And they will re-strip the road.
Well, I knew they were. They just didn't ready for Arcalala yet.
Yes.
Okay.
They don't, they don't need it. They know how to march down the street.
Um, we put lines down anyway.
Um, outside of that, we don't have a commission meeting next week, but, uh, you're all invited to be, invited to be in the parade again, um, on Saturday.
I got a word.
And so, oh.
I'm taking off early.
Yeah, I think you should take off early there.
Yeah, that's our busiest time.
And you can ride on the fire truck or you can walk part of it, ride part of it.
That's what I'm gonna do.
We can get you a little Shriner car, if you want a little Shriner car maybe, you know.
I like that. Boy, my grounds have to be mad if I, if I get one of those cars.
Fire truck sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does. We have to walk alongside, pass out candy, right?
Yes, sir. We have the candy already, um, uh, Chief Wolf and I, we went and we spent a couple of dollars on candy.
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
We, we've got the, uh, bagpipe band coming again?
Uh, I've got feelers, I'm not sure, I'm hopeful.
Okay.
There's a lot of different things going on.
Yeah, yeah.
Lot of class reunions coming in this week.
I heard that the old fire engine's running and working?
Yep.
Okay.
Like, like a champ.
Good.
Just in time, take it to the museum.
If I can't get the bi- the bagpipes off late.
Okay, okay.
He's a little rusty though.
Gonna wear the kilt?
Well, he'll wear, wears kilt all the time.
Can you play him?
Hey, hey, you got a cellphone, do that. Okay, do you have anything else?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
What, yes, sir.
And they're starting to replace the busted up con- concrete panels on Gulf Industrial Road.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that, that was a question I was gonna have, yeah.
Gulf Industrial Road. Now replaced seventeen panels, does that sound right?
Six thousand square feet to replace it, so.
Yeah, there is.
Quite a few panels.
There is one out there that's just really bad.
Oh, there's a lot of them out there that's bad and, and so, this is why you engineer a road, is because there was no road base in there. They thought that by putting eight inches of concrete, reinforced concrete on a horrible base was gonna last, it does not. The whole point of a road is having a good base. Without a base, you have no road. That road is just falling apart.